You got your phone on? Tell me what's in there. Hey Buster, you want to speak?
Morning JB.
How you doing man?
How you doing?
How are you?
What's up Buster?
It's been a long night.
Get together down at job.
Early morning as in went home, changed clothes. Yeah.
Really?
I'm a little nervous I'd say.
Yeah.
Jumping?
Oh. How'd you play all night? What did you take no dose or something?
No, you don't have to do that. Not when it...
Stacking them deep.
It was a more than...
Hey, there was two guys showed up at 2 o'clock.
Couldn't believe it started up.
Well, I can. Janus is here, we can start now.
Janus, we ready?
You got us recording? We are?
I don't know.
Oh, so it was already on about five minutes ago?
Yeah. Yeah, just so you know.
We may want to delete that section.
Good morning. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting to order June the 13th, a little bit after 9 o'clock at this time. Mr. Craig Slay, could you have our implication for us please?
Yes, let's pray. Father, thank you again for the opportunity we have to serve. I thank you Father for this place that we call home. I thank you Father for these men who have been willing to dedicate themselves to serving others and fellow man and making the best interest of this county something that's a priority. Father, thank you for the citizens of this county that participate in their government, who are interested in the things that go on here. Father, I thank you for their attendance today. I pray Father that you will help us all to act and behave in ways that are pleasing to you and that are in accordance with your will. Father, we think about our military-mended women who are holding up the banner of freedom. Father, I thank you that what they do allows us to assemble together to conduct this work. I thank you Father for the sacrifices of their families and I ask that you would bless them with Christ.
Amen. Thank you Craig. We have any public comments? No public comments. At this time we have old business minutes approval of May 29, 2014, June 2, 2014. Motion by Mr. Brown. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda item.
Those two approve.
And a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Morris not here, huh?
Huh?
Never mind. I don't have a question.
That's a one question to a one person, huh?
Yep.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Judy Fortenberry. Good morning.
Good morning. First item is a request to pay registration fees and travel expenses for myself and several members of my staff for the collector education classes.
Okay.
Most of them being canceled a little long, there'll be mileage for those.
Okay.
Most approved.
Second.
Got a motion by several, but Mr. Morrison made a motion, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
Second item is a request to order 2012 tax sale and return tax app purchase. This was a bank of assistance to my family tax.
Okay.
Most approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
Just like it noted, for Buster's sake, I'm wearing red and blue today to support the...
Just for Buster?
Just for Buster.
Well... Hey, wait.
You can't shut up and sit down.
Thank you Ms. Judy. Mr. John Sullivan. Tax assessor. Good morning.
Good morning. Just one hour of session to change the assessment on 2013 real perfect profit assessment.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Bridget Herring, purchasing clerk.
I make a motion to approve bids as presented.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Brown. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
Since that's the years we like to look for.
You finally arrived, huh?
Second item was when you opened the big contract with the distributors. What is that one year period against July 1st?
Most approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Brown. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Thank you Bridget. Mr. Charles Parker, county consulting engineer. You're not wearing red today Buster?
No sir.
Okay.
I'm green, whatever. First item I have on the agenda is our old abandoned road reconstruction project and I'm recommending approval of pay request in my 18 Southern Rock LLC in the amount of $231,247.67 and the question authority to issue that check.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions?
Do you have the completion date on opening room?
No sir. We're hoping by the end of the year.
Room's finished.
So whenever they...
Once you come back out, you burn out the comments.
That's where you leave it open.
Yeah, well, we're not going to comment.
That's pretty good. Pretty good. End of year, I heard that.
End of a year.
Buster?
He didn't say which year.
Buster, how much of a... How much do they want to expand the project for rain delay?
What kind of numbers are we looking at for rain delays?
We talking months or...
No, we talk for quite a few days of various kinds of times, which you know, I'll get that information to you later.
Has it been decided yet?
The deadline yet, huh?
No, no. The contract has made some requests.
Yeah, I think they've made some requests already, but it's in negotiation right now, right? Got you.
We'll be discussing that.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Did you get your question answered there, Mr. Wood?
No, he didn't get his question answered. He'll understand.
More to come.
He said next year, he didn't say which year.
Okay.
That's an old Ranger near call.
Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
It's end of the year, just don't know what year it is.
Yeah, well, my calendar's not really good. Second item I have on the agenda is my early road extension project and this morning I'm recommending approval of pay request number nine in the amount of $118,001.68 to Joe McGee Construction Company Incorporated and the question authority to issue that check.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions?
Things are going real good there.
Yes sir, yes sir, they are. We're not a real long way.
Right.
So it doesn't rain down there as much, huh?
Well, it has, but they've done a lot of work prior to that allowed them to get in there quicker. They're a good point.
Good engineering.
Good deal. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
Next item that I have on the agenda is our 2013 bridge rehabilitation and bank stabilization project. Now this morning I'm making recommend approval of a summary change order in the amount of $15,691.16 and also approval of the final pay request in the amount $34,904.23 to put in contract and authority to issue that check.
That was a reduction, right?
No sir. That's what I was saying.
He's fixing to address that.
It's a lot of reduction, I will tell you why. I didn't know when this project was in the rock project, but we also had an interest in the pilots and we found some pilots that initially they've... They've here that are moving, you know, around. I don't remember what I've got, how many it was, but anyway, it involved encasing some additional casing on some pilots. Like when we were out there and the water level had dropped down, you have a steel pilot here and you have casing up here, but you couldn't have casing enough to go down below the water level, which is what is required. So we had to extend those cases.
So you couldn't see it until you got to the water level?
Right, yes sir. So that's what that is. I think there was maybe a few hundred dollars of additional loss.
So most of it are associated with the cases?
Yes, they were pilot.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Craig Slay, board attorney.
Item A under my section, Mr. President, is a discussion and potential action or amendment that proposed amendment to the beer line ordinance. You guys will recall a discussion at prior board meeting about this particular request that was made. You have a copy of the proposed amendment, it's in your packet under 10A. And what I want to focus on is the primary amendment language and the basis for the amendment is in section 15 under recreational sales. Page number, that's about the fourth or fifth page.
Section 15?
Section 15.
Got you.
At the bottom of the page.
Got you.
And it's the last sentence on that page that reads, "Further, notwithstanding any other... any of the other provisions of this ordinance, the sale of beer line by the drink shall be permitted at any event sponsored by the Pearl River Valley Water Supply District conducted exclusively on the premises of any public park owned or controlled by the Pearl River Valley Water Supply District to be consumed solely on the premises of a public park owned or controlled by the Pearl River Valley Water Supply District between the hours of 11 a.m. at 11:00. You will recall that under our existing beer line ordinance, we already have one exemption for recreational sales that has been in place since the conception of the ordinance and that was a carve-out for any golf course or country club wherein there exists nine or more regulation golf holes to be consumed solely on the premises between those same hours, 11 a.m. at 11:00. So this is adding one additional exemption for an event sponsored by PRV conducted solely on PRV park property. How this came about is that on the Madison County side of PRV, they have had PRV sponsored events that take place on the Madison side and in conjunction with that PRV sponsored event, they have worked with either the city of Ridgeland or Madison County to obtain permission of a vendor of beer to be able to sell beer at that event on the Madison side. Request has been made by the vendor for equal treatment on the Rankin side. And so we inquired about that, we talked with each of you guys about this request. We shared this information with sheriff with some idea, some eye towards the concern that there might be about law enforcement activity around this kind of event and I worked with Richard Lawrence to make sure that the language was appropriate and acceptable. Therein, my understanding, Sheriff, I will work on my understanding, my understanding is they don't have a position on this, but they're satisfied with the language as presented at any rate.
I guess, let me interject a little bit on that. Sheriff, as far as all of this, the PRV patrol will be basically the ones that's going to be over primary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was... that was clear.
The way that we've structured this language, it's conducted solely on PRV park property and Reservoir Patrol has primary jurisdiction on PRV parks.
So I guess if anything gets out of hand, they'll be calling you anyway, right? Yeah. Okay.
So that's the proposed language and they have an event sponsored... they have a sponsored event coming up around the July 4th, which is what's sort of driving the need to look at this and consider this now.
So do we not need a public hearing?
No sir, this is our standard, but it is not a zoning ordinance. It's not a comprehensive plan issue.
Just a regular ordinance.
Can we just go ahead and adopt it now? I make the motion to approve the change.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
Item B under section 10, with permission, we need to remove that item from our list.
Which one?
The public.
Item B, under public hearings.
Public hearing. Okay. Remove it.
What did you say, B or D?
B.
B?
B is a boy. And so, Mr. President, I would request that we have a motion since these are all being set on the same day, at the same time, and these are all nuisance property hearings. I would seek a motion setting item C through K for public hearing nuisance properties on July the 3rd at 9:00.
Okay. Do I have a motion on that?
Certainly.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown to set these public hearings for July the 3rd. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Thank you Craig. Mr. J.K. Stringer, county administrator.
Get your stick. You want your stick? No.
All right.
The first item, Mr. President, is approval of a claim for getting the amount of $5,836,729.12.
Most approved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
The... Mr. Brown may want to...
I might better go get him.
All right, here. You know, and I think just in case people, Mr. Brown has a family that is involved in this, that's the reason he's accused of...
Thank you.
The... The additional... Item B is kind of an interesting item. It has to do with the safe room. One of the issues we were dealing with on the safe room is we open it up and we get it closer and closer. It's a very fine facility and I guarantee it's going to be safe in tornadoes, it's not going to... But of course, it is not a safe room unless the doors open when people show up. And that is, how do you figure out, we were talking about how do we figure out an issue that we can ensure that we get the doors open? And you can have all sorts of systems and subsystems, because you need a good system to get the door open. And when the sheriff came down and reviewed the facility and we were talking about that, he came up with the suggestion that he would operate the safe room, the same as he does to JDC. That he would take responsibility for total operations in the safe room and by doing that, what he would need is another position, that he would put an officer out there every day along with a crew of inmates to operate the safe room, also to provide maintenance with the multi-purpose pavilion, which solves first off that we got the door open, secondly, an issue we've had for some time on getting day-to-day maintenance, people painting and that type of stuff out there.
Takes... It should take a big burden off of Dale's crew too, I believe.
Yeah. And so this will be... Am I saying something wrong? No. And so this is a real plus and I would recommend we do this.
And also the part about cutting them off the lights, I know y'all been meeting and I'm sure that's thinking far y'all's discussions hopefully.
Yeah, well...
Sheriff, I want to ask, make sure that I'm clear on this, so the one person that would basically be the manager of that, they would also, that would include any events, anything that goes along with that, is that correct?
Right. I mean, I have a plate name over here, but it's pretty segregated.
Right.
Easy for them to be.
Put it in the book.
They call this number to book the day.
Right.
I would count that this person again, well, if it's shipped here from Monday to Friday at 5:00 and our contingency plan is after hours.
Right.
We'll send somebody from the jail, dispatch, I'll send two people down there to unlock the stairs, I have a radio down there, telephone, and the tension also, because the doors are locked and all, so that's 24/7. And all, like, and the rest of it, it just, it makes it a constant work, a constant improvement, not that building of the livestock.
Which is a very big plus. I mean, that's one's been needed for a long time.
And again, I told you, it's, it'd be a learning process for all the guidelines, you had to have two assistant managers, you had to have all kinds of things, most people already have.
Right.
My two guys to shop, I make two assistant managers, because they're right down the street from the...
Right.
From the facility.
Okay.
And I think that, I think they make it work, it's just that again, there's probably going to be some more issues coming up about product maintenance fund.
Right.
And that for paint, marble, red and everything, stuff like that.
But the only way to keep it... keep it intact would be basically, like you said, to keep, you know, be preventive maintenance and everything else, so you've got to have that.
Well, notice I had, I told you, we talked about this, that if I'm going to build that safe room, it's my responsibility, if it's unlocked, one of my deputies will be down there, stuff they do. Right in high school has the dames down there, there's going to be a deputy there. So the dames up with me is responsible for locking the, making sure it's secure and everything, so any type of door was open, there'll be a sheriff's office, uh, deputies are deputies.
And we win for everybody.
Right, and that's, and one thing that I did ask Hoopie and I don't want to elude even any further to that, but I, because I know it's a little bit still premature, because I know we have the committee still out, but I know that they were looking at possibly a manager for that piece of it, so I don't want to open up a can of worms, but I didn't want to duplicate services where we have that and then possibly a manager for the other facility too, so then you have...
I'm thinking that's what we're doing right now.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hoping, but I don't know.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
We starting, I mean, you're jumping into bigger, bigger side. This is, this, we're starting here and then we're going, we're still working on that part.
Right, right, and that's what I guess was...
And I think you're mainly going to kind of see how this works and kind of grow into something else.
Right, and that's what I'm just kind of bringing out a little bit, not to say that we want to, not, I think this is a great idea, I mean tremendous idea. I love the idea about that.
They're mainly, they're mainly looking at the safe room and who in maintenance throughout the facility of the...
And we're going to work hand in hand with that.
Right, well, I have to.
Exactly.
Back on the top of trees, I need to do this, you know, to do this, what needs to be done, we'll start working on that, but like additionally, Monday they'll come in, the safe room will be clean, ready, you know, whatever, and then throughout the week they'll be working on anything else on that campus right there.
Right. If it's a possibility that we're going to add another person after the results come in from the committee meeting, I'd rather us hold off on doing anything and, because I don't want to be stuck then having to hire somebody else.
Hold off doing anything is what? Is this right here?
Yeah.
No, this, well, not really, because this is a...
Is that one of the questions they asked, was that person that a book could be in?
Exactly. That's kind of the same kind of type thing, I just don't want to see two different managers, you know, I mean, top managers, one, here's a facility that's almost connected to it and not to say that, because we've already got someone down there that's been down there doing this same type thing, so it's not that I'm opposed to your idea, because I believe that is very viable, because no matter what, the FEMA room, we've got to have someone there and, you know, the, well, this way we get to have someone there for maintenance up key.
Right, exactly.
This is, this is a slam.
And so, we still have the other lady that's going to be there to run the shows.
Yeah. The person, we're going to work hand in hand, I said, there's a month, a million and a need to set, of course, they're going to book it together.
Right.
The other one together, but all I'm saying is if I'm going to build that room, I'm going to be complete and utter right.
Right.
Because it's going to come a time of day where it's going to hurt somebody's feelings.
Oh yeah.
If some bad weather comes in and say, hey, look, we got to shut it down.
That's right.
Pay it out, get rid of it.
Because you've got to have someone in charge.
Anyway, this is a slam dunk here for us because of the, what he's offering and the fact, just the point of, there's so much just small maintenance that has not been done over many, many years as far as painting and...
That's right.
Just, just, I mean, you could just start the list, but that's where they're going to start nipping away at it and with the inmates and this person he's talking about is going to have to be seeing after that, making sure the inmates are doing what they wanted, their job duties are, and then he'll completely handle the safe room. Trish is still going to be doing what she's doing.
Right.
But anything would, booking of the facility would coordinate obviously with anything that is going on in the safe room.
Right.
I mean, wouldn't it make sense for his staff to do the booking for both, since they're right there together and a lot of times if they're going to book one, they're going to book the other?
I think that...
We're working through that.
And we've talked, that's, that's a coordination issue and you're right, Mr. Bishop. The call may well come in to the sheriff's office and they may well, they will have to have the capability to say, is the pavilion also booked, you know, open that time and then say, yes, open, but before I give you a firm answer on the pavilion, let me get with Ms. Granton and make sure that we can support your activity and that coordination has to be done.
Because there's some things that won't have both, a facility, a event in the multi-purpose building may not always need the safe room as far as...
That's right.
Some usage, so it could be, they could be separate.
But if you had one location to do all the booking, you wouldn't have to worry about tracking somebody else.
I, yeah, that's your point. But I think that, at least initially, until we get the experience behind this.
Right.
I don't think that we want to put the sheriff's lady in the position, oh yeah, I'll book the pavilion for you absolutely, before we get with Trish and say, is that, you know, it's open, is it something we can support? We can get right back to them.
I said, I might, I don't have a horse back there or livestock back there, I don't know what they do.
Well, no matter what, I think that Trish would still be in...
Yes.
I think she would still be in, in the mix no matter what.
Yes.
I don't, I don't foresee anything, I don't see us making that person that you're trying, that you're recommending, putting them solely over that. I think that that would be a collaborative effort between your staff and also Trish.
Have they found the right person?
Right, and what I'm worried about is though, is a top of the line for you and one over here too, I just don't see the need in two top level, whenever we've got Trish that's been doing it for years, that's what I'm, I think that the experience is already there.
You, and, and you're right, Greg. At the, at the meetings, we, we actually have, uh, are trying to address that.
Right.
In that same, same manner of what you're talking about. Uh, the biggest thing would be, uh, someone to have, be able to have promoted somewhat.
Right.
Uh, but yeah, we're, that's, those are some of the rough edges that we're, we ain't quite got worked out.
Right.
So we are, we're looking at that. And I, we agree and everybody agrees, you don't go hire two, two people doing one.
Right.
Doing one, one to another.
That should be one job, right.
So we're, we're just trying to figure out a way around that.
Well, I think that, like I said, I think that this is a great, I mean, absolute great idea. You know, I've, I've talked about this for six and a half years. We've been needing, you know, some, some inmates, you know, inmate labor down there to, uh, you know, basically spruce the place up and make it, make it a shining star because, and I think that this is gonna be a great way to make this happen.
Some of the inmates are concerned with a meeting and things. If there's an immediate, we're talking about having inmates down there Monday to Friday.
Right.
So if there's a meeting with purpose of the inmates, they're gonna leave.
Leave.
Paying or down at the.
Right.
Shop.
Right. Yeah. This is during downtime, basically.
Right.
Sure. Um, did I understand that you seemed to say you had to find the right person?
Well, I have one though. I've already approached and talked to this, you know, back today about somebody with a livestock. The storm room is, it's gonna be black market papers after what I went down there. But then, yeah, if all you have down there is Trish and she's caught, I'm gonna somebody that can get it on the tracker, get it on the tracker. So I would need a dirt bid for a calf or I would need a dirt bid for a goat show.
Right.
You know, somebody to help out that has a book in the background.
Right.
Got two or three on top of the sheriff's office.
So you're asking, you're not talking about hiring someone outside law enforcement? It's gonna be one of the deputies?
This is gonna be almost like a little promotion within sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Get a good job, the right person, maybe a job.
Right. Someone that can multitask basically.
I guess I misunderstood. I thought we were gonna do all the scheduling through your office.
We'll do the schedule for the safe rooms.
But.
Through my office. That's what we're talking about. It's a program process. It looks like.
That's what he wanted to.
It looks like if they go somewhere, I can't follow through.
Then it could filter into that.
That's the place that's been going on for a while. The southern brain, you know, practically.
Well, I imagine whenever we get our website up, we're gonna be able to do a lot of this online. So hopefully that a lot of this can be done without even having to call somebody.
Right.
But I have a lot of things I wanna do down there that I, it's not gonna cost you a lot of money, but like I have a lady that works on three motorhomes. So why don't you go down there and look, give me the whole landscape and play on this thing?
There you go.
Look good. I want to get the nice places.
Right. Which it should be. And I, I applaud you for, you know, stepping forward to do that. I mean, that's, that is a win-win. So.
Why aren't you doing that? Just go ahead and pick out that iron fence, go around the whole perimeter and, you know?
I'd start working on that one.
And find out when we're gonna pay for all that too.
Well, we constantly remind the committee, uh, don't price themselves out of a facility.
And basically, you know, honestly, they, there has been several comments on that.
Yeah.
Just that to be careful of that.
Right.
That's very, uh, that's much on their mind.
Right.
Self-conscious about that.
I didn't leave it.
Huh?
Well, you confiscate all kind of, uh, vehicles, don't you?
It's a crew cab.
Oh, a crew cab.
He'd probably get you one of them, uh, backhoes too.
All right. Have I got a motion to, um, uh, accept this additional position of the sheriff manager?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
I'll take it.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions?
Now, that's just a, this number here is including fringes.
It includes fringe, forty percent fringe.
Okay.
It includes everything.
Okay. No more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like a sign, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Next is, uh, Brett has a, uh, short brief on, uh, proposal to move, get on with, uh, creating another substation in Walters Fire, uh, Fire District.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Walters Fire District?
Isn't that the name? Isn't that the fire district's name?
The Walters Volunteer Fire Department.
Yeah, not Walters, but the Walters.
It just so happens, getting Walter, a fire department.
Sounds like, sounds like they have Walter.
It just so happens, it's Walters Fire Department.
Let's put it this way, it's gonna happen to be bleed over into Griggs too.
Walter had the naming rights.
Okay, go ahead, Brett.
Back, uh, a couple of months ago, we were having the, the problems with, uh, Brandon Fire Department actually responding outside of their district into, uh, the county. The, uh, up in the top left-hand corner is, uh, Brandon's actual city limits. The county of Yellis Gold is the, uh, area which is referred to as, uh, ESN two sixty. Brandon used to respond to that and, uh, just because it's so far out of their district, um, they did not want to respond to it anymore. The, this is Walter, uh, Walter Fire Department, um, their actual district now that they are covering. They have, uh, one fire station which is located right there. It, uh, it's gonna be Concord Road. The other station down at the bottom, they use a kind of, it's not really a fire station. It's just a home facility for, you know, some, some extra equipment that they have. Um.
Where's that?
Right there. That is their, their main fire station. They're actually only really working fire station. That's just a, uh, like a full alarm facility. They keep, you know, an extra tanker and stuff like that at. Um, so the problem we're looking at is all this area out here is, is not covered. Um, according to the ranger bureau, we, uh, any fire station or any credit to be covered has to be within five miles of the fire station. Um, so we're looking at putting a fire station right there on that property that county already owns. Um, if we put the fire station in there, then we'll be able to cover pretty much ninety-eight percent of the Walters Fire District, including this area out here that Brandon used to cover.
Where is Deer Ridge on there?
Right there.
Okay. So they're, they're basically covering it right now, but that's as far as they go. Is that, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. But that's just at the time being. So if we cover that, then they will, they will ba- basically back off and we can still cover that.
What is it that we're proposing to do?
They will still come in and, I mean, respond mutually.
Right. Backfill?
Into the backfield.
Okay.
Yes. Sorry.
What is it we're proposing to do?
Uh, build a, a fire station?
Click on page two.
Give it up.
Which is a substation basically, right?
It's a substation, correct.
Cause wasn't that, uh, at one time it was an eight, now it's gone to a ten? Am I correct?
That area has gone to a ten. It's because of the, 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 how far everything is.
Can you give us a?
So every house out there, their fire insurance, their home insurance has gone up?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, drastically.
In some cases, it's doubled.
Doubled.
Yeah, most times what it does.
We've gotten calls after calls. I mean, that quick.
That is what is actually an eight. It's what you see right there in the red.
Roughly what is, uh, you have any idea?
That looks kinda brown, Daytree.
Well, it's, it's red.
Okay.
It's just gonna look brown there. Okay, brown.
Do you have any idea what the numbers?
Population.
Population, residents or whatever out there?
You're looking probably three thousand out there, two thousand?
Well, this only, uh.
The shallow precinct is about twenty-five.
This only shows a building.
That's what I was thinking.
Hundred thirteen thousand for the building?
Precincts large.
Yes, we already own the property out there.
What about the trucks?
Fifteen hundred, yeah.
The, um, we were, you know, just ordered a brand new truck for Southwest ranking. Uh, that truck will have a, you know, basically a year left on its rating. We'll pull that truck to Southwest and send out there to Walters. It will be a, a substation. So it actually will be a backup station from that side. So it will be fine on our, on our rating because we'll have the, the brand new truck is sitting that's Walter Station One, plus their tankers. So this will be just a outlying substation.
And how long will that last out? I mean, as far as?
A year.
Uh, we'll get credit on it for, you know, a year. It's a brand new truck. Uh, we can do the three-hour pump test on it and extend that, that rig. That truck is actually one of our.
Better ones?
I mean, it'll, it'll.
So you think it'll, the pump?
So if you get, it passes the rating, how long will that give?
That'd give us another, what, three or five years? I think it's three years, yeah.
Is that, is it fifteen years old next year?
It'll be fourteen years old next year. Hope another year it'll be fifteen and we'll do the three-hour pump test. You're looking at basically two years.
So we're actually gonna start doing some of those? Like?
The ones that without, feel comfortable doing.
The ones that feel like it'll pass.
If you feel comfortable on that.
I'm happy with that, man.
You know, um, we were gonna talk, I was gonna talk about this later, but since it's come up, uh, this is one of the deals that Brett's able to go out and do those pump tests. If we had to pay to have that done, it would cost us a lot of money, but it's something that, uh, he's had the training in and he's able to do. Uh, and it, what do we figure it's saving on a yearly basis, Brett?
I'm looking thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Saves us about thirty thousand dollars a year because he.
Just by having in-house expertise in there.
By having it in-house. Very much like Scott with the radios.
Right.
Don't we still have to have them folks come over though when you do it?
The three hours test, I'll just have to have, you know, someone, like have you come and say, this has gotta be a third.
Oh, it doesn't have to be like somebody from the rating bureau?
They will come and witness the test. I mean, they don't have to come in there.
But they don't charge us anything doing that because you're.
Party because, you know, somebody that.
Sign off on it?
Sign off says, you know, you have to watch me, you know, pump the truck.
And they, and they don't charge us because you're doing the test.
Correct.
Right. Which saving us about thirty thousand a year? Yeah. That's what I, I know you and I had talked about that before. So invaluable experience.
All right. Well, the whole for the fire station is gonna be that. Uh, Mr. Stringer asked me to, uh, also look at what's coming up for, you know, the next couple of years. Um, in, in twenty fifteen, we will be, uh, trying to order, you know, one more fire truck for Southwest. Uh, because there are two individual departments. They both have two separate ratings. We make one district, but they work two departments. So we'll have, we'll have to buy a, uh, another fire truck for them in, in twenty fifteen. Um, the, the tankers that we're trying to replace, the fire commission has got a, uh, new program they're doing. We can buy the trucks for a hundred dollars. After, after a year, then that truck is titled over to us. We, uh, just did one for Lake Harbor. We did one for, uh.
Was it Puckett? Yeah.
Uh, both of those trucks, if you haven't not seen them, you need to take a look at them.
Top of the line.
I mean, they're some, you know, some phenomenal trucks. And I've talked with, uh, a couple of your guys and, I mean, they're, they're trying to do the same thing now.
So you sent waiting for you to get off that? You didn't put dollar signs in front of those numbers. We gonna spend five hundred and fifteen thousand next year for Southwest?
No. We'll send down five hundred and fifteen thousand total. There's three tankers at sixty-five thousand and one fire truck for three hundred and twenty thousand. The, the three hundred and twenty will be for Southwest, yes.
Where, where are you seeing us get that money to pay for?
From our insurance rebate money.
Will that, will we be able to do that?
We, uh, we currently have, uh, about a million and a half dollars, uh, now in that fund. Uh, we bring in, uh, receipts, uh, about one point two million dollars a year. Uh, last year, for example, we expended seven sixty. Of course, there's, but that year we're planning on spending right now, uh, for the purchase of the trucks, uh, equipment five hundred and fifteen. So we've got the money. Uh, the money is there. Uh, and if we continue on with this plan, uh, then we will have a pretty well-set program on keeping our equipment modern, operational, and within the budget.
Well, it has to stay that way to meet the, uh, fire, the standards.
Right. Yeah.
Keep the rating bureau off of, yeah.
And you've been on a rotation basis and this kind of follows right into the rotation basis. You've been following for the past several years anyway, right?
Is this where the money, is this how we've been paying for the others? I thought it came from another fund.
Well, we've al- we've also got the, uh, uh, the, uh, the nuclear, Grand Guff Fund.
That's what I was thinking.
Money that we get that we can apply to this if we have to. But I, uh, I don't know if we're gonna have to do that.
I hope not.
Yeah. I think if we, I think if we continue on with the plan that Brett is recommending, uh, we're gonna have a good plan with good equipment and something that we don't have to, uh, fall on our sword about some point.
Well, and what do we do?
Go ahead.
What, what do we do after we, this gets built to help all those people out there so they go from a ten to what's the best they can get?
Eight.
So what has to be done to make that happen?
Once the station's built, um, basically all we'll do is you with the rating card and, uh, they'll come out and we have to do a water shuttle because there's no, there's no hydrant shot there. So we'll have to do a water shuttle. We'll do a water shuttle, get the rate and we'll just send out a, get with credit, uh, and, and basically all we'll do at that point in time, once that's completed is, you know, send it out on Facebook, you know, just, well, however, for those people that live there to notify their home or their insurance company that, you know, the rate has been, you know, lowered and treated their insurance.
Yeah, word will travel fast. I can assure you, as many, as many people.
We've done it in a couple of other places, Jake. Uh, it started about four years ago down there at, uh, Sheriff's Estates there in Florence.
Yeah. And so not only that, go ahead, uh, Brett, and show, uh, two thousand sixteen to seventeen.
All right. Two thousand sixteen, one truck for Lake Harbor, uh, at three hundred and thirty. And then twenty seventeen, one truck for Monterey at three hundred and forty. And before it gets asked, yes, they're all the same fire trucks. I just, I mean, I added a little bit of money because it goes up every year. So I, those figures are probably not gonna be exactly.
Is that the, the Monterey, that's, uh, Station One?
Station One, yes.
Yeah, cause I knew, uh, Station Two's got the, they got the new one back.
Station Two's got, got a, a two-year-old or one-year-old truck.
Right.
Station, uh, about twenty seventeen. They were bought a, uh, actually a, uh, a, uh, custom truck. So it was a twenty-year truck.
Right.
So this is, in twenty seventeen, it'll be twenty years old.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask you, if you, uh, with the two stations in the Southwest, just, just asking, if they were, they had built, if they had one station, what would that do to them? Or could that, would that he- help hurt or anything?
Right now though, as, as big as that district kids are gonna need the, the two stations.
Cause they don't fit in the five mile.
Okay, that's what I was afraid of.
They, they have called and asked and we've sat down, we've talked and we've gone the rating bureau. Um, as far as manpower and everything, one station, yes, would be fine. But as far as the way they look at it, the five road.
Because the five, that's, that's what I thought.
It would be, it would be hard to.
Yeah.
Even though they're working as one, one department, but their rating is based off of that one station which has got their own rating and then the other district has got their own.
Kinda like what you're dealing with right here in Walters.
Have they ever talked about increasing the mileage as far as instead of five to seven? Or, I mean, it's just that's.
That's pretty small this day and time, five.
They basically looked at dropping it.
Really?
So.
To what, three?
They just, that was just in, in some talks.
Ooh. Walter, by us doing this, um, I know like the last couple of years, haven't we withheld Brandon's money on their fire rebate money? Well, by us expanding our area is that, where's that play out with Brandon now? Do we get to keep all that money? Cause now we're gonna serve additional area or what?
What's Bob yet?
Can I say something?
Yes.
We didn't withhold their money. They entered into a contract. They opted out of the money.
Correct.
They wanted a separate bargain. So they entered into a separate agreement.
Aye.
So we didn't withhold their money. We gave them exactly what they, they wanted.
So where's this put us going forward?
Well, it'd be up to them whether they wanna get back into an agreement with us, you know, whether they wanna join with the rest of the county or.
We don't have, right now, we do not have a fire services, a, a current fire services contract with the city of Brandon.
But remember, there was some things that, that they had addressed that needed to be done at Crossroads River Oaks and some other stuff that.
They would like to.
Reason they couldn't take your equipment out of the citizens.
I thought it was, hon- honestly, I thought most of it was because of this area out here that they didn't, they were saying they were costing them too much money.
Those two go together. They were unwilling to move equipment out to serve this unserved area, uh, on the basis that they needed that equipment located at a point closer to the hospital.
Right. So now that we have a station here, are we needing to do a, a contract with them? Are we gonna get any money out of this or are we going to give it all to Brandon?
We probably will end up going back to what we were doing before the issue arrived, which is treat Brandon kinda in the same manner as we treat the other municipalities within the county. Which means that Brandon then will be, uh, agreeing to enter into a contract to receive the money that they, that like the other municipalities receive.
What is, what is Brandon planning on doing with their annexation? I've seen where they're gonna take in a huge part of south of the city.
Mm-hmm.
How are they planning on covering that with their fire department?
Aye.
Why you laughing about it?
I don't, I don't know.
They don't discuss those matters with us.
I was gonna say, I don't, I've never, I haven't seen a plan of action. Let's put it that way. I've heard it, but I have not seen a plan of action how they plan on doing I've heard it, but I have not seen a plan of action how they plan on doing that. I mean, if they're going to expand, then they're gonna have to do something. So.
Yet, they're, they're creating their own argument, is what they're doing.
Right.
I, I, you know, I'm not involved in their discussion, but, you know, they argue with us about territory that's not covered, and then they end it, so I, you know, I can't, you know, they could never involve me in leaving it. You know, they won't talk.
That's the same.
We'll be glad to talk with them.
It's kind of like, almost identical to, you know, out in Greenfield where, you know, Pearl wants a station out there towards Patrick Farms, but, you know, right now, they don't have one, so it's.
Well, I imagine there's gonna be a battle coming between them two cities.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. A battle.
Another battle.
I hear you.
I guess.
Okay, um, let's see, let's get back to.
That ain't nothing to you.
Briefing. So, on this briefing, what do you need from us, Brett? What, do you need us, any authorization?
I think we need for y'all to approve to move on with establishing this new substation.
Okay.
Only since we budgeted for it, you know, would I be in favor of it.
Well, let's put it this way, I know we've talked, we've been talking about a year and a half, so I, I would, do we have it in the budget?
Well, this is not a, this is not a general fund item. This is out of the, out of the fire rebate money.
And we have it.
So it's not a, and, and we have it, the balance that we have in the account will cover this.
Yeah, I know, y'all told me a couple months ago, we budgeted for this.
We budgeted insofar as we have talked about, it wasn't part of the county general fund budget, because the, the fire is separate from that. We did talk about it, and we talked about what the amount of money we have, and that this was the plan, and we were planning on doing that. Now, I, I do not know, I'm gonna be honest, I don't know if we ever had a motion to do this. And that's what we're asking for now, okay?
It's gonna be paid for out of fire rebate.
Yes.
I like that motion.
Oh, I got a motion by Mr. Johnson to move forward with this. I second that motion.
I'll ask a question.
Any more questions?
Yeah. You know, whenever we do our budget.
Yes, sir.
We, we have to show the money we got going out, or coming in, we have going out, it's supposed to balance to zero. So where are we going to make up this one hundred and thirteen thousand?
It was not in the budget that we balanced to zero, which, you know, this is, that was done, and we showed that we would have these expenditures. But we didn't necessarily say that we were going to direct those expenditures directly toward this, but it was, that's where it was going at the time we did it.
So we're not taking away from anything else?
No, we're not taking away from anything else in doing this.
Okay.
No, that, that's a good point.
That's a good point, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, we're not taking away from anything else to do this.
Alright, okay.
Okay.
Do we still have to go to Pele Hachi?
Huh?
Reservoir.
Huh?
Do what?
Hold the call, answer the call.
Do y'all go to Pele Hachi?
Yeah.
As far as reservoir departments?
Yeah.
If they're requested, yes. Reservoir, I mean, all, all of my departments have a, a county-wide mutual agreement. I mean, if, you know, anything happens, you know, something big happens, yes, they will, they will go.
Statewide.
Yeah, statewide.
Right. Alright, any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, Brett.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, okay. The next item, Mr. President, discussion, the county-wide wireless communication system. I know we talked about this the last couple of meetings, just to let, bring you up to date where we are. We've had a meeting with the Wireless Communications Commission last week. They have some things that we're looking at with them, and so it is continuing to be a work in progress.
Okay.
Okay.
That was a quick briefing.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, Hoop.
That was it?
That, that's all we got right now. Dave, I thought we were actually going. What I'm saying is, we don't have a rec, we don't have a recommendation, you have a firm recommendation.
Oh, that went quick.
Yeah, discussion of county-wide wireless communication system, that was it.
That was it, that was it.
I thought we were gonna like, get some memorials here, and you know.
Well, I had hoped that maybe we would at this time, have some, something more firm, but we're continuing discussions with the WCC on what they will approve and want to approve and that type of stuff.
One of those cliffhangers.
Alright, now, with that, Mr. President, that's all I have.
That's all you have, okay.
But we do need an executive session.
Alright, before we get into that, we got any additional business to be discussed? Okay, do I have a motion to discuss the need to go in executive session? Motion by Mr. Brown. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Hey, Dave, where are we at on that bridge? I think they got all that done. We what?
She's got three items here, each of them less than a thousand dollars on some maintenance work that needs to be done on the trucks. And there, and the money in that particular line item out of the fire budget has been depleted. We'll have to move some more money into it. It's a routine matter.
Right.
Uh, but we do need to make sure we have on the minutes that y'all have approved this.
Okay.
Uh, one of them is at the service to Star Engine number two for five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Star Engine number one for six hundred and sixty-five dollars, and for the Puckett engine number one for six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So we can do that at the end, make sure we get that?
Well, no, if we, what I'd like to do is to put that on the agenda now, and to go ahead and get it approved, if you, if you.
I'm not exec, I'm just, I'm gonna leave, but it's, it's just routine what happened.
Okay.
Plenty of money in the budget, it's just, we had an emergency at the reservoir, it was over ten thousand repair. So it just expanded the budget, this is just service of the trucks like they need to be.
Okay.
Make a motion out of these items.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop to add this item to the agenda, second by Mr. Morrison, any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison, any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Good job. I make a motion, come out, executive session.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison, any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, out of executive session.
Gentlemen, there are, there's a couple items that need to be added. We can motion on those, we'll start with the first one, which is a, which will be a motion to add the request for a salary increase payable by the county in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus benefits on an annual basis per employee for two employees of the Rankin County Chancery Court, both of whom are court administrators, one Melvia Summerall, the other is Celia Lemprous, got that right? So we would need a motion to add that.
So we, motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bishop to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
We would need a motion to add an item, this will be the award of the Old Highway Forty-Nine Drainage Improvement Project Contract to Thornton Construction Company. And, so we need a motion to add that.
I'm looking at motion adding that item to the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
This time, we will hear from your, the county consulting engineer concerning his recommendation on awarding the Old Highway Forty-Nine Drainage Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. We would recommend the award to Thornton Construction Company. Now, Jay Bearden Construction Company was the apparent, was the apparent low bidder, but it was not the lowest and best bid. And you have to have a certificate of responsibility to hold these projects. And Mr. Bearden's certificate of responsibility did not meet the requirements of our bid documents. Thornton Construction Company did meet those requirements. Therefore, we would recommend that it be awarded to Thornton Construction Company.
Before you take the motion, if I may, just for the purpose of the record, I want to provide you guys with the law in this area. The certificate of responsibility that Mr. Parker referred to is set out in the bid specifications as highway, streets, and bridge construction. That's a specified class under the state board of contractors, and it, it indicates the qualification of the bidders. That particular classification is a major classification under the state board of contractors context. There's one of about six major classifications. In this case, Thornton Construction Company qualifies because it holds the highway, streets, and bridge construction certificate. Mr. Bearden's certificate of responsibility is what's known as a subspecialty. Under highway, streets, and bridge classification, he has a subspecialty in excavation, grading, and drainage. That, that subspecialty, in order for him to be awarded the contract, that particular subspecialty would have to constitute at least fifty percent of the construction project, fifty percent of the cost of the construction project. In this case, the engineers have indicated to me that excavation, drainage, and grating constitutes approximately thirty percent of the cost of construction of this project. So it does not meet the minimum fifty percent threshold. I have an AG's opinion, two thousand three, Westlaw, two-two-one-three-nine-eight-one-two. That opinion, August of eighth of two thousand three, states that if the bidder does not have a classification to perform work that constitutes at least fifty percent of the cost of the contract, the board of supervisors cannot lawfully consider the bid. On the basis of that, that holding, on the, on the basis of that opinion, and on the basis of, of the information that's been provided by your consulting engineer, we are of the opinion that you may not lawfully consider Mr. Bearden's bid, and therefore, without consideration of his bid, he is no longer the low bid. And Mr. Thornton, Thornton Construction Company is the low bid and should be awarded contract.
Okay.
Lowest and best bid.
Lowest and best bid. Do I have a motion to accept Thornton Construction on this? Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, I'm going to submit my memorandum, a copy of the attorney general opinion, and we have a letter from Thornton Construction Company indicating to us their awareness that Mr. Bearden's company does not qualify because of the certificate of responsibility issue. I'd like for those to be placed in the minutes. And if you will, I'd like a motion to have these documents placed in the official minutes so that we have a record of the decision that was made.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown, any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Did we vote to add it, or, I mean, was that the vote to add it, or do we even have to?
That was, no, that was just to add those documents to the minutes.
Yeah. I don't think we have to add that to the agenda to add those two documents.
We're good to go.
Are we ready to talk about Old Fanneroe now?
Yes, yes, we are.
Good.
Sure, there's nothing wrong with Old Fanneroe.
I would just comment before Jake starts, you know, I was, and then attorney told me great, I was sort of vague early into me about better questions, so Old Fanneroe was perfect for that because we wanted to come back, and I did not have this on my agenda, we wanted to come back and go some information. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jake, who virtually lives down on Old Fanneroe.
So in other words, he will not be down at the coast next week?
Oh, it's no way he can show up.
Sorry, man.
Sorry. I guess Buster's staying at Old Fanneroe, huh?
Yes, I would.
I'm worried about Shane, cheering up brothers up there. Okay, as you're aware, the city of Flowood, through Pickering and their, and the subcontractor as employed by Southern Rock, has requested two additional pay items to be added to the contract, one of which is a utility location item, and the other is a downtime item due to delays incurred by the subcontractor as a result of the water sewer construction. So, you know, obviously, we had a meeting with them, I don't know, a month or so ago, to discuss this generally, and, and at that time, the, the, the bottom-line dollar figure that they were requesting, that they, they suggested that the county was responsible for, was in the neighborhood of about, you know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars. And this was a result of, the, the first item, the utility location, was due to where the lines were drawn on the plans, which were done, you know, by the city of Flowood's engineers that were added to our, our project, weren't exactly as accurate as they needed to be for the subcontractor to get out there and do his work, so they would dig, not there, they would have to hop around a pothole, go through the process to actually find where they needed to do the work. So, you know, Pickering and their subcontractor came up with the cost for this, and, you know, they were looking at a total of, of a hundred and eighty-five hours at a rate of three hundred and sixty dollars an hour. Of the one hundred and eighty-five hours, they subdivided that to what they felt would be city's responsibility and what they felt would be county's responsibility. County, they suggest, is responsible for seventy-six hours. Now, my understanding of their reasoning for the county being responsible for this is, for example, Entergy, AT&amp;T, Comcast, organizations of, of that nature, did not relocate their facilities, their utilities prior to the project as they should have in relation to what we were told, what we were led to believe. They said they would be here, they didn't exactly get there, they'd gotten in the middle of the easements where Flowood was supposed to set their lines, so they had to navigate, hop around, and readjust continuously throughout the job to get the water and sewer in. So, the, like I say, the city is saying they are responsible for one hundred and nine hours, and the county is, they suggest the county's responsible for seventy-six hours. And the seventy-six hours at that hourly rate of three hundred and sixty dollars turns out to be twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twelve cents that they are claiming that the county should.
Well, this is a change order.
This will be a supplement agreement slash change, yes.
I don't understand why they're saying that we're responsible.
Well, it's our project, and right-of-way, the, the utilities weren't moved.
Well, they were moved, and my understanding of the situation is, before, because we even were given permission by MDOT to start the construction process of this job, we had to notify AT&amp;T, Energy, Comcast, and, and that bunch to, you know, get out of the way. We provided them with a set of drawings to get out of the way. And to, an extra layer to that was, we, there was right-of-way, there was temporary easement, and then there was permanent easement, which, if you guys remember, the permanent easement was acquired and obtained by the city of Flowood to have room for them to put water lines, sewer line, things like that. And, you know, throughout the process of working with these utilities, they would come to me, and they would say, can we get here? And if it was within right-of-way, and it did not interfere with road construction, we said, fine, you can get in the back three feet of the right-of-way line, or get as close to right-of-way line as you can, just do not interfere road construction. Well, they would ask me about, can we get in this permanent easement area? I said, well, you, since city of Flowood acquired that, you need to approach them, because that is their property, or they have rights to that property, which they did. They led the, my understanding, they led the city of Flowood to believe that they would squeeze up against the backside of that easement to give Flowood plenty of room to go through there to relocate their lines. Well, they didn't actually do that, they went smack dab through the middle of it, and when actual construction process started for the road, it became apparent that they couldn't lay their water line, their sewer line, or whatever the, they were trying to construct because of an energy line, or an AT&amp;T line, or whatever may have been in the way. So that was claimed on the utility location item as well. So that's where Flowood's engineer went through, and they divided out these hours under their own notes, under their own assessments of the situation, which we were not involved in to begin with.
Can we not backcharge the utilities for doing, I mean, it, it, it sounds like it was their mistake to.
And how are we gonna be done to pay them?
Well, that's the thing.
They jump in there, their, their counterargument, if we go after AT&amp;T, if we go after Energy, their counterargument's gonna be, we are out of the way of the road, county, and that's your part of the project. We got out of the way of the road, so what's your claim?
Well, I understand, but they were told not to be, or go to talk to the city of Flowood, which it didn't.
We, we think.
So whenever they went to the city of Flowood, in essence, they're going to the engineer on the project. Is it not the engineer on the project's responsibility?
We were not, prior to construction starting, we were not employed to have a man on the job site. We provided these utilities with plans and, and locations where they could get. They chose to relocate inaccurately. Well, I say they chose, I say they. You got a road project, and you got a water sewer project, and those two things are going on at the same time. Two things going on at the same time. You got two sets of engineers. Our engineers got them out of the road project, got them out of the way. City of Flowood trying to put water sewer down. The AT&amp;T, Entergy, those guys got in their way.
Jake.
Yes.
Whenever you had your meeting with them, did you not bring your concerns to their attention? That you didn't agree with this?
Yes, sir, we did.
And what, what was their rebuttal?
They really didn't have a, and, and it was just, they didn't really have a rebuttal.
Probably said sorry.
The rebuttal comes from the contractor who says, guys, my man's sitting out there waiting on everybody to get out of the way so we can do our work. Somebody's responsible. Don't make us bear the responsibility
Right.
for y'all getting in a T.T. match over who should have moved where, when.
Basically, if I understand right, you're saying that they came to us, we allowed them to get in our right of way, but it got to the point where they needed to access Flowood's permanent easement that we had no control of. And then when they located their utilities and Flowood's permanent easement, they put it in the middle of their wrong spot. So, whenever you brought all this to them, then how did Pickering not say that it's on them? Did they not have anybody out there on the site to make sure they put it in?
No, sir. Typically, you don't in a situation like this. Like I said, this is prior to construction, this is.
So then why couldn't Flowood go to the utility company and say, you put your stuff?
Actually, they, actually, they did. And for whatever reason, they just decided to stop. They, I, it was my, we were led to believe by, I'm not, a person that's not employed there now in the public works division has started the process, I believe particularly with Entergy, and that process just stopped. And now they have set their sights on the county to get money out of it. Because I, I don't know if they feel that it would be easier to get reimbursed from you guys or, I, I, it would be very difficult, in my opinion, to go after an Energy and AT&amp;T and somebody like that. So, that's just. When, when I'm sitting there, I was in the meeting, by the way, when they were laying this out for us.
Right.
I, I, I heard the number, twenty seven thousand some odd. And the lawyer in the immediately started sort of economic feasibility, started, started thinking through the issue of what sort of cost would be associated with pursuing these third-party utilities, Entergy, AT&amp;T, Comcast, for, for those dollars. It makes no sense at all to emote a file over twenty seven thousand dollars on something like that. So, my immediate reaction was, move on. We'll just, we'll take the handle this and move on. And if we got a claim against AT&amp;T, or Entergy, or Comcast, it's around world.
Right.
They're gonna be needing some easements at some point from the county.
But if we don't, I'm not saying it's not pay it, but I think we need some way of opening some type of file with them where we disagree with this and it's on paper.
I agree. I just don't know how serious you get about collecting it, Jake. I think the cost associated with trying to get it.
Well, and I'm like, Jay, that running like you, the round world, I mean, let's make a file and make sure we have that on radar, so.
We reported to them that they owe us this money.
And let's keep in mind how he opened up his dialogue, due to M.V.O.T. specs.
Right.
This is how we had to do utilities.
Right.
So, and the whole thing kind of evolved and snowballed from there, it looks like. You know, the right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing.
And you had so many different entities in it, no matter what.
Two engineers on the job, eight utilities on the job.
Why, though, if we have utilities being located in right of way or eas, temporary, permanent, what have you, why do we not have somebody out there making sure it's being done right?
I don't know if I have a.
I mean, I know we had a similar situation on Henderson Road where they come and put the, you know, the fiber line in the wrong spot.
Well, one more thing, uh, just go back to saying, by our custom to go, catch me, please, put the utility right down in the middle. Well, they're working in the east, the Flowood guy. We aren't. The county doesn't have a dog in that race. We don't care where they put the utilities. You know, all we wanted was utilities out of the way to do the road work. So, yeah, maybe somebody should have had somebody out there, but we have the city of Flowood.
Right.
Yes.
But I mean, the, the utilities they relocated that was not in Flowood, still they had to do something in ours, right? So, don't we need to have somebody out there to make sure that we don't get screwed up? Or is this not something we usually have problems with?
It's not, let me tell you why.
Not at this magnitude?
Generally, it's gonna be some distance with, probably ten to fifteen feet most of the time, roughly, in that sort of, uh, width. In that ten to fifteen feet, that's where those lines have gotta be located. There are better spots within that easement than others. It's exceedingly difficult for us, it would be very hard for me as a lawyer to make a claim against Entergy and say, you got in the easement, but you didn't get far enough over in the easement and then try to convince the court that somehow we've got a legitimate claim.
If you're in the easement, yeah.
So, this was an issue of width of the easement and the specific location within the easement. Even if you got an engineer out there watching every bit of it, I'm not sure how you're supposed to anticipate precisely what else is gonna be located in that easement, where it's gonna go in that easement, where it's better for it to go in that easement. These, these are issues, get them in the easement. So that's what happened here.
Right.
I guess for us, we're not that worried about, because we don't have gas and water, sewer and all that.
Let me insert something. Flowood put up one and a half million dollars to relocate their water line and sewer line. Then they came back with an estimate that they needed thirty something thousand or whatever it was from Flowood to relocate the water lines and sewer lines and so forth. Well, Rose and I went toe to toe about, oh, hell, I don't wanna pay you. I said, no, we got to have it now. He said, no, I don't wanna do it now, I wanna do it when it get through, tell me how much it was. Which now, it makes sense because he's saying, you know, what is the bill to end it? Well, anyhow, he cut a check, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. He cut, city cut a check for thirty something thousand dollars, which brought their project up to a million, eight hundred, whatever it was. And the agreement was, if the utilities were more than what they had put up, that they would put up. And if it was the county's fault, county would have to put it up. So that's what I know about it and what it stands now. If it costs more to relocate the utilities, because hell, I don't know who. Mamaw could have put that pipe in quicker than they did.
Well.
I think we all got a good understanding of it, Jim.
I mean, one, typically, a situation like this, it, it was sort of a atypical situation, beginning to even put the water sewer project together with the road project to begin with, but there were other reasons that outweighed that and said, put them, put them together. But on a typical L.P.A. project, we would have approached Flowood Water Sewer just as we had Entergy or AT&amp;Ts that relocate your stuff. Now, if these were separate projects, which is the way it's typically done, Energy would have no leg to stand on with the county as saying, well, Energy's in my way.
So it was basically simultaneous.
And, and.
And not a lot of room to work with.
So you need contract structure, we have, and so it's, it's difficult.
And as like, well, as like you said, I know twenty, twenty-seven thousand's a lot of money, but like you said, too, is it worth the fight? But, you know, it is worth the, putting against the red flags.
Is it, who, which, which utility was it?
They were, they were, you know, it was.
Several?
It was several.
Yeah.
And, and the Entergy, the AT&amp;T, Comcast, it wasn't just one particular utility in a certain location.
Craig, what can we do to, to file a complaint with them?
Well, we need to put them on notice. And so, distracting a letter indicating to them the county's portion of this additional cost.
Yeah.
And, and demanding
Yeah.
that they share equally.
Yeah.
And remitting that back to the county, which we ignored.
Yeah.
Which we'll, we'll hear a no or whatever. And then we need to remember that as they come forward with additional requests later
Yeah.
for assistance in whatever way it is and seek to get our redress at that time.
Right.
Okay.
Let's back up. We made a motion several months ago that if they had to relocate the utilities, because now they have to pay, we don't have to pay them to, to relocate, they relocate.
Right. Yes, sir. What they're asking for, Mr. Wood, is for reimbursement of the delay associated with their relocation. This is, it's different from them saying to us, we need you to pay to help us relocate something.
Yeah.
But the city, the utilities have been relocated. It was just, their claim is more or less of, of the extra burden that they had to, they incurred to work around the utilities that weren't properly relocated at the beginning.
And it cost us too, because when it delayed, city of Flowood, it delayed us too.
Exactly.
So, where are we at now? Where, what's next?
Okay, what he, what is being addressed right, right now, is supplemental agreement?
Okay.
Yeah. We got, we have other things to tell you about. Right. And, and we basically, I have supplemental agreement number one and supplemental agreement number two, both for Old Fanneroe, but due to the uncertainty of whether certain things would be accepted or not, that's why we decided to break them up into two agreements. Uh, number one, the job in general had a, felt significant delays primarily for the utility relocation part and other minor issues here and there. So, we have a contractor that by M.D.O.T. spec will, once he goes past his originally allotted time, he will get popped at fourteen hundred dollars a day downtime. And it's no choice of ours, and it's, it's basically an M.D.O.T. mechanism in their pay application process. So, uh, what we have, they, they have come to us with requests for additional time as a result of various items. Majority of what we have just discussed is to extend the contract timeout by one hundred and sixty-one calendar days.
I thought we were in hours earlier.
That's the money part of it. But this supplemental agreement right here, that's the, the, the hour part is what would compensate the subcontractor for his claims of having to navigate around the improperly relocated utilities that he, that were flowing about.
So why are the two not the same then?
The time and the money?
No, I mean, you're saying the hours that he charged him back to us, that he had to go around.
He went through there and, and pothole surged, you know, actually went through there to locate these things and work around. So, and that slowed the subcontractor down. And that, and they produced us, or produced Pickering, an hourly rate of three hundred and sixty-one dollars an hour for that work. And, and they, you know, the summation amount of hourly work that they gave was one hundred and eighty-five hours.
Right.
That's what it came down to after he got whittled on. Uh, I think he got whittled in about an half. Yeah, he started off with two hundred and seventy, and then Pickering whittled that down to one hundred and eighty-five. And then they took the one eighty-five and said, we feel that the county's responsible for seventy-six and, and the city's responsible, one hundred and nine of those one hundred and eighty-five hours.
Okay. So then.
I don't see what's responsible for seventy-six.
The number of days.
Yeah.
We have gone through that and gone through that.
Because they put it in the.
We feel comfortable, this is something that should be approved.
But it shouldn't, to me, I, I guess I don't understand, if we're basing it just on utilities?
It's not just. It's not just, it's primarily utilities.
I mean, I don't know how you go from one hundred and eighty-five hours that they're being, you know, saying that they were withheld to one hundred and sixty days.
Well, what that one hundred, what that does, Delta, that was a subcontract, they have to stop. They have to slow their process down to locate a utility. Well, they're out in front of the road construction. They stop, put on the brakes. Well, the road construction right behind it puts on the brakes. So what they have to do, shut down their process, relocate to another section of Old Fanneroe and continue on work. Well, that slows down their, their productivity in, in, in.
So this is a different contractor you're talking about?
Yes. Sub, the one eighty-five.
Sub in general, now we're talking about.
Okay.
Right. One hundred and sixty days, man? That's a half a year.
That's, that's calendar days. Let's walk through it.
Yeah.
Tell me what the one sixty-one poses.
Okay. That's a half a year. All right.
How much you? There was a, I don't know, within the last three or four years, M.D.O.T. has added a policy to their contract due to the stormwater, uh, measures that have, they have pretty much doubled on construction projects, that they have to review the, the contract stormwater erosion control plan. And they buried in, in their red book and their specification that you're supposed to add sixty days just for that process. Well, that was overlooked and the contractor was not given those sixty days. So, of the one hundred and sixty, there are sixty of those days right there. And as a matter of fact, I went through, uh.
So that's on us?
It's time, right?
It's just, it's, we're just talking about time.
The sixty days is on us.
Well, it is, but it would have been in there anyway.
It would have been in there anyway.
Yeah.
It would have been in there anyway and, and.
He'd have had to added that in there, which is.
Right, right. And I even went through, back through our files from when they submitted their erosion control plan to the actual date of the letter from M.D.O.T. that shows when they approved it, and it was fifty-eight days. So, you know, add the sixty and get, you know, back.
Back to a hundred and twenty.
Right. So that was sixty of those days and, uh, and, you know, due to the contractor schedules impacted by another twenty-one calendar days due to the contractor subcontractor waiting on the city of Flowood for water line tie-ins and, uh, to existing water lines and to adjustments to a pro, proposed water lines and tie-ins resulting from unforeseen conflicts. Now, I know there, in the, in the initial phase of this project, when they came to a situation that they could not build as planned, they had to make an adjustment. Well, from the time that the subcontractor say, asked the question, what do we do? To the time that they were saying, do it this way, you know, so, they had several episodes where that added up to twenty-one calendar days. Well, the contract, I don't have the actual figure of what the contractor asked initially, but we worked that down to twenty-one calendar days on our end. Let's see. So that's eighty. And they had to manipulate or do an additional six-inch force main connection to an existing force, uh, force main connection. And that was three additional calendar days there. They had, uh, uh, you know, we took the one hundred and eighty-five hours that we've been talking about where they actually had to do the process of locating the hours, and we backed that down to, to forty-nine calendar days. Uh, then we had to, uh, right when the project started, it was a request of the contractor to, to, when they installed the, the subsurface drainage pipes, to actually wrap the pipe joints with filter fabric. And that, if you accumulate that over the, the, I don't know how many miles of pipe, but the thousands of feet of pipe that we're adding, you know, that can, adds up to thirteen calendar days, an estimation of that. So then you had to, uh, we had to rework some driveways a couple of times to get, you know, proper, proper ingress and egress. And, and throughout the project to this point, that equates to another seventeen days of, you know, waiting to get something figured out. And the summation of all those is one hundred and sixty-one calendar days. But that's just, that is more or less just an, excuse me, adding time to the project. But as, but like I said earlier, you know, the, the biggest chunk, this, this supplemental agreement is due to the utility location and the, all the items that are on the supplemental agreement, the utility location, the additional connection to the six-inch force main, the pipe wraps. M.D.O.T. has asked us to eliminate sandbags and use rock bags. We had to change out some round pipes, some arch pipe. All that's, all that equates to a total of one hundred thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, twenty-one cents. Now, you take that number and there's three people, three organizations that will be involved with splitting that cost. Uh, number one, all the non-participating items, which there are sixty-seven thousand dollars the utility locates and a thousand dollars for the force main connection, those are all non-participating items, which M.D.O.T. will not participate in at the eighty percent rate. Uh, and the remaining items, you know, bring the total to one hundred, over one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but if this supplemental agreement is approved as it's presented now, Flowood would, would pay forty thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. The county would pay thirty-four thousand, forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. The county would pay thirty-four thousand, forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. And M dot would pay twenty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. That would be their eighty percent contribution to the participating items.
And that will clear up the entire. That's the, that's two different ones, like you said, the thirty.
That's supplemental agreement number one.
Right, okay.
Y'all recall that the county is serving as the LPA. Some monies are handled through us, but there's participation from both M dot and Flowood.
Right.
So you're, you're seeing the full total amount of the county's portion of that is thirty-four thousand and change.
Gotcha.
It will be presented to M dot once you guys sign off on it as a total of one hundred, well, over one hundred thousand dollars plus one hundred and sixty-one days. But the check that you guys will have to strike if it's approved in this manner will be thirty-four thousand, well, over thirty-four thousand dollars. And keep in mind, that thirty-four thousand dollars does include the seventy-six hours that was suggested by the city that you guys should pay for.
Right.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars basically.
Flowood should pay that much just for the driveway to the church?
I can't argue that.
I still don't see why we really owe, I mean, we have a, we were at fault here. I mean, through all this conversation.
The, the.
It just looks like it's, this is the easiest way to.
It is, it is. The, the, the bottom line of, there's, to, to lay a blame on anybody, it would, the, the energy ATT Comcast, whoever was in the way at that particular moment.
Right.
But, you know.
But it's not, it's not the easiest thing in the world to reach in their pockets and get money.
Right. Their immediate response is going to be, we were in the easement.
Right.
We moved it out of your way.
And, and I would.
We got in the easement.
And I would defend that.
We didn't draw a line and say, you need to be right here. We were in that easement.
The counter argument to that is, you were provided with the plans. You saw where the water line and the sewer line was going to be located. You knew better than to get in there. That's a weak argument to have to make from a legal standpoint.
Because you're within that easement.
Because they're in the easement.
He didn't tell you how deep it was though, did he?
And another, yeah, because in some cases, um, you know, the easement is just, just that. I mean, we're within our easement.
That's right.
They'll never get it back up?
I don't.
They can't, you can't argue that.
It's a hard argument to make. And it's one that, quite honestly, I feel better about us putting them on notice that we think they're at fault. That we don't necessarily, and I won't say this, but our, the point would be, we don't necessarily intend to make an issue out of it now. But we're putting you on notice that we feel like you're at fault. So when you come back to us later.
Good luck.
We will talk about it then.
Jake, when we start the project?
When?
Yeah.
Oh, Lord.
Eighteen months ago.
October thirteenth, I believe.
Who can tell?
Two days, thirty-six hours and fifty-two minutes.
I'm guessing October thirteenth.
It was a two-year project?
Uh, it was a six hundred.
Six hundred, sixty-six day.
It's six hundred and twenty-one day calendar project, I believe, something like that.
That's two years.
Basically.
So October fifteenth should have been it. So now we're adding a hundred and sixty days.
October of four, no, maybe it was October twelfth that we started.
Yeah, fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we should have been on schedule to finish October fourteenth.
I believe that you may be correct.
A hundred and sixty days.
Right.
It's quite a few business up there.
So basically, we're about a year, would be about a year behind, roughly.
I'm, I'm.
Oh, no, though, it looks like it's really going pretty good.
Six months.
It, it. Just six months?
Yeah, okay.
If, if, this is just pure speculation on my part, if the job can be completed sooner than an additional one hundred and sixty days allows, the contractor has every incentive to get it done faster than that.
Right.
Southern Rock is not asking for any more money.
Right.
They're paying labor. They're paying their guys. They're playing, paying equipment rental. They want to get this thing done as quickly as possible. This was just a fair assessment due to these issues to calculate the amount of time to contractually give them if you guys.
So is there gonna be?
We have to do it if M dot, if M dot regulations, they're gonna pop them fifteen hundred dollars.
So is there gonna be any other days coming back for weather and all this?
From a weather perspective, they have had experienced harsh weather conditions, but the way M dot charts and allows for additional weather time, they are not being given any time for weather.
Well, I would hope six months ought to be adequate to take up whatever weather issues they got.
Right.
Are all utilities in place?
Yes, sir.
Everybody?
It, it, it's non-road related. All the utilities are in place. Now, occasionally, we may have, like, we're laying a pipe, we have the minor Comcast service to a house. Comcast's out there, moving that stuff on a, they're hopping on it and they're taking care of it.
So April fifteenth, we're gonna be out there doing a ribbon cutting with, with red lights and everything up? Or are we not, is red lights coming later?
They're actually, they, they're actually starting the process now. They're on site and getting.
Now you're just gonna put them on the east side, right?
You remember? You remember, uh, when we did early road, red lights were the, uh, extreme holdup for months?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Is this a?
Yeah, they couldn't get the red lights there. We just had a road closed off. We were waiting on lights.
At the end of this time, we're gonna have a fully completed road ready to go.
Yes.
That is our anticipation.
I mean, April fifteenth.
Big scissors.
April fifteenth, we ready to go.
Well, I'm not looking, I'm not, y'all, I am a calendar, I'm not looking at the calendar, but I recuse myself.
Tim, Tim's in charge of that.
I recuse myself of that portion of the discussion.
Tim, you tell them a little funny about Penn's fish house?
I want to tell you, man, May is by definitely, it better not come after that.
I went up there one day, Mr. Penn called and complained, and they had two, both ditches open. They couldn't get in or out. So I said, y'all got to fill up one of them damn ditch. And he complained again. So finally I called him. He called me one day and I said, Mr. Penn, I'm gonna come up and move them barrels myself. I went up there, I moved them one inch. He called me Monday and said, man, let me tell you what, that was a big hell business. It picked up.
Oh, yeah. We have supplemental number two to take with us.
The, like I said earlier, we decided to separate all of the issues from one to two because number two, I'm not so sure how you guys would re, uh, vote on they, the subcontractor for the water sewer subcontractor. Not only did they have a, a utility locate cost of the one hundred and eighty-five hours, they also are requesting downtime. That their guys are out there waiting for decisions to be made or what adjustments to do, that they claim that their crew is out there sitting doing nothing. They have developed an hourly rate of five hundred and thirty-one dollars, seven cents, and they are claiming that the county is responsible for fifty-seven hours.
I'm, I'm knowing that.
Sir?
The utility contractor?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm knowing that. I've, I've, I've had to sit and wait. I mean, that's just part of the thing. I mean.
Who's, who's requesting that?
Delta.
I'm just, I only wanted to discuss.
This is why we broke it out.
This is why we broke it out, um, and, and.
So did y'all go and like whittle them down to, and this is where it comes down to?
No, this is basically what they gave us and, and, I basically told Pickering, I said, I'm not putting this on the first agreement because I do not want to sacrifice other time and other issues that need to be approved for this.
How in the world do they get charged us five hundred dollars an hour when they're not doing anything? But three hundred dollars an hour when they working?
Whole crew.
Well, they're talking about their, their whole outfit that was on Old Fana Road was shut down. That's my, my speculation to it. And they may have dedicated a certain squad of that whole crew to go through there and locate. That's, that's the only thing I can come up with. Now again, let me make sure this, this hourly rate and these, this summation of fifty-seven hours was developed by Delta and was organized by Pickering and Flowood. This was obviously, our scope of work as far as engineering service in the county is, was on the road construction.
This is non-participating. And we are not aware of, it's not reflected on the documents, that Flowood is participating in this cost either. This would be total county. It's another reason why we broke it out.
Why in the world would it be on us then?
Exactly.
I'm just doing my due diligence and presenting to the board.
Well, they'll have to promote your personal addresses with this one.
Short then, because, I don't know, we're gonna talk about that. That's just part of the unfortunate part of being in construction.
They'll have to come.
Especially a job that's.
When they say, take another lick at your calf or something like that.
I can't believe they're gonna, I can't believe they're gonna.
Let's handle supplement one.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
Let's, let's handle supplement one and move on with that and then just have Delta or whoever come back and, and.
I'd like to watch his back.
Well, it, it, and something that, that seemed pre-armed in that meeting that we had a month or so ago at City of Flowood, it seemed to me that this discussion stopped at, was it twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars? It just stopped there.
Yeah, because I, I don't remember anything else.
And now, and, and from when that meeting concluded, I started my paperwork and I asked Pickering for, you know, some documentation of all the claims.
Right.
And I started adding these numbers up and you're looking at fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Where did, yeah, where did that go from?
They tried to slide in some extra.
Right.
And so I, you know, that's, that's the whole reason why we separated this at one and two, because I didn't want this to hang up other items that need, in my opinion, need to be approved.
I just don't see how we're responsible for the one.
Either, we need to vote not.
To reject supplemental agreement number two.
Okay.
Or you can table it.
No, man, number one was.
It's y'all's call.
I just say reject it. That way they know where we stand.
Yes.
Okay.
They can come back and.
We need to vote on supplement number one for sure.
You need to add both.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to add these two items to the agenda.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop to add both of these items to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Number one.
No, let's vote on.
No, wait a minute. No, okay, you go ahead and add it. Go back.
It's added. Okay, so any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Now, we just need a.
I make a motion to approve number one.
Number one includes that easement stuff, right?
Correct.
The hundred and sixty-one days.
It's all easement related.
Right. See, I don't, I don't, we're not responsible. If they put it in the easement, it shouldn't come back to us to have to pay because he didn't get his, uh, he put his line a little, he's, he's in the easement.
What, what our attorney's saying that it's gonna cost us a heck of a lot more, twenty-seven thousand dollars than.
If we open up that can of worms. I mean, we can fight all day long, but it's gonna, you could go.
Why do we need to even fight?
Let me clarify. The, the, the folks that are asking for the extra dollars are not responsible for any of the problem. They are the victim of the problem.
That's the victim.
So they're gonna, they're gonna fight us on?
Well, they have made the claim and they, their general contractor, your contractor is sitting there holding a bill from them and they are claiming that they are entitled to be compensated for their potholing work and their sitting around waiting.
And that's our portion.
And, and what we're agreeing to pick up our portion of is the potholing, helping.
Potholing.
It's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Some other things, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
And squeezing it around.
Squeezing around in.
What role does the general contractor play in supervising and signing off on their work, their request to be paid? Do they not have a responsibility here to say, yeah, they were out here having to do all this work and, and I, I think they need to be paid this?
They, I think they're in agreeance with their subcontractor. Yes, sir.
But do they generally not have that responsibility though?
Just go over there and get some money from them. Go down, they're not fighting. They'll give it to you.
Yeah. Just like if you're building a building, the general contractor is gonna make sure the sub does everything right.
Technically speaking, Delta is employed by Southern Rock. To do a portion of the project.
Yeah. So Southern Rock is basically coming to us saying, hey, you need to pay them. They owe this money.
And in the meetings and the discussions that we've had, when everybody pulls up to the table, Southern Rock is more or less sitting on the side here and, here and Delta make their claim to the, us and to the board and to the city.
Did, had they ever been involved and come and say, no, that ain't right?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
All right, so supplement one.
I make a motion to approve supplement one.
Motion by Mr. Bishop to approve supplement one.
And to, uh, file a complaint with all utilities that have created this problem, so that they'll pay us the money back.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign?
Next.
Motion carries. Okay, on supplement number two.
I make a motion to deny number two.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
So Jerry, why don't you vote against that, man?
That was a, you did a good job presenting that.
Our, our deal?
Well, we'll get back to, we'll get back to Buster.
They're coming to us because we're the easy one to come to for the money.
He just can't keep up with his dates.
If we don't do it, we're just gonna hold the project up.
I know that. Well, I know that, but it's still wrong. And that's the reason they're gonna come to you because they know you're gonna, they're gonna give it to you because, uh, we give it to them because if you don't, you're gonna hold the project up. And, uh, so let's go there and we'll get, we'll get that part of it.
Now Buster, let me add, they don't know how many hours we spent up on them driveway that those business is to keep them open.
Hell, we're not through.
That's right. We're gonna send them a bill too, aren't, aren't we, Wood?
And Flowood, Flowood bend the shirts. Now that was, I was, I think I was mistaken.
All right, let's talk about this gentleman who sent the email this week. I don't want to wait till. Yeah, yeah. Well, I know that's out.
Sixteen-foot fence.
Someone, did he send all of us that email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sixteen foot.
Well, I've been kinda going back and forth with him and he's never had a temporary fence put up. And I think it's only right that we do that if we're gonna be another year getting the project complete. But we do, he's supposed to be sending us the agreement that whoever did the easement with him, whose responsibilities are what?
The sixteen foot?
Sixteen foot.
No, 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 no. What he meant was, and he said it was the, the wall, the retaining wall is what he's meant. It's gonna be part of that sixteen foot and then whatever, the fence, uh, on top of that. Yeah, so. But we don't need to sit here and be saying that, well, somebody else did the right-of-way acquisition. We didn't do it. We still got somebody out there who has had a, has dogs and no fence up for them for some period of time now.
You shed some light on that.
Uh, I, I've discussed this issue with the contractor and based on a conversation with them yesterday or the day before sometime this week, they informed me that this section of roadway that we're talking about, they should be done by the end of next week.
So everything will be cleared up?
Well.
Well, I don't know about being cleared up.
Well, that's, that's getting the contractor away so for the.
One of the things we gotta get to the bottom of is, is we don't know what this gentleman that Jay is talking about. We don't know what he was told about.
Okay, so, but he, but he's got an agreement? Are you saying he's got an agreement?
He has what, he's gonna fax it here, um, what, you know, every time somebody goes out to do right-of-way, you sign what you get and what you're responsible for. So.
Oh, he's gonna send that. Good.
A lot of the time, or most of the time, what the right-of-way, what agent will do if the folks got a fence. They'll pay that person for fence. Let, let it be their responsibility because as a general rule, it's extremely difficult to satisfy a property owner with a fence. So they go ahead and pay them. I don't know whether this was done with that particular property owner or not.
Well, who, would it have been the county, city, or who, who would have done that?
This, this was, is an implication of a permanent easement. This is a spot, a piece of property that Watson Jones was employed.
Okay.
On the city's behalf.
City's behalf.
To do a negotiation and stuff like that. So we were not involved. We, we drew up the dimensions of the plan. Said this is the space that we need. Handed it over to that bunch and they went and negotiated with landlords. We have no idea.
So it comes from the City of Flowood, basically?
We have no idea what deals they made.
Right.
But he, he would not have dreamed up, he would not have dreamed up a sixteen-foot retaining wall when he died.
We, we have never, we have never designed, never intended to have any sort of sixteen-foot structure there, period, to begin with. The retaining wall that we're building there now in the most extreme point at that location is a total of ten and a half feet. Three of those ten and a half feet are buried. We had never.
So really, you're looking about seven and a half foot at the most.
Right. Nothing, I don't even recall through the design process, have anything that would have been sixteen-foot. Nothing, I don't even recall through the design process, have anything that would have been 16-foot anything.
Okay, so what I'm getting at, you're saying they're going to be done.
In that sense, in that week, so.
So what does that mean?
What, what that means is that would be the time for the residential fences that were taken down to start to be, begin the process of getting those reinstalled. But there lies the question because we don't know what the.
Where are we going to be at on all them property owners down there? How are we going to know who, how to deal with everybody? Who's responsible for the fence?
I'm assuming that they were dealt with similarly. It was the same type of easement, same agent.
I'll give you an example. I know that I personally, a gentleman that owned, used to own Duncan Marine.
Yeah.
He was compensated for his fence as a part of the acquisition of the easements.
Right.
He was paid for.
Yeah.
Right.
It's his responsibility to get his fence back up.
He was given money to take it.
I got that, but I mean, how do we find out about every other property owner down through there?